Evening, I call to order the Highland Park Board of Education Hybrid Workshop Meeting for this evening, Monday, April 8. May I have a call to, oh, I forgot, number two. Announcement of notice, the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advanced notice of and attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed and acted upon. In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the Highland Park Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting setting forth the time, date, and location to be submitted for publication in the Home News Tribune and the Star Ledger, and posted on the board's website at least forty-eight hours in advance of this meeting. Members of the public who wish to address the board will be given the opportunity to do so before the board adjourns for the evening. May I have roll call?
Dr. Beatty?
Here.
Ms. Cassell Dunn?
Here.
Dr. Coleman?
Here.
Dr. Pixley?
Here.
Ms. Prus?
Here.
Dr. Schoolman?
Here.
Ms. Daniel? Ms. Vardeman? Ms. Voorhees?
Here.
Okay, we'll stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we had three communications, one about something called payroll, parking question, and an invitation to the Gratitude Tree Project. That was on March twenty-seventh. Next meeting, we'll be looking to approve the hybrid workshop meeting and executive session minutes for March eleventh, twenty twenty-four, and the hybrid preliminary budget presentation and voting meeting and executive session from March eighteenth, twenty twenty-four. We'll move to our student representative reports.
Over at Irving, came back from their spring break today, and they would like to thank everyone who went to their spring dance before the break. They had a wonderful time. Also, their pre-K and kindergarten students will have a visit from Silly Billy and his reptiles this week. Thanks to the PTO for providing the students with this opportunity. There also, their used book sale will take place at the end of the month, and more details will be going home about this soon. And lastly, over at Irving, they hope to see you for their Earth Day celebration on April seventeenth. And information has gone home about this, or you can check the Irving's website for more information.
Okay, Bartle time. Bartle's Epic and Student Council present the movie night. Wear your pajamas and watch A Bug's Life to celebrate spring. You may bring a stuffed animal and a blanket if you want. The HPEA Pride will provide popcorn and snacks, and this event is going to be held on Thursday, April eleventh, at five fifteen PM in the Bartle auditorium. It is rated PG, just so you know. RSVP by Tuesday, April ninth, which, oh, that's tomorrow, at two fifteen PM with the link or the QR code. Details are on the Bartle website. Next, Bartle students will participate in the TAY Anti-Bullying Assembly presented by Tay Fisher, who is a former Harlem Globetrotter, on Friday, April twelfth. On April eighteenth, they will have an author visit from the poet Janet Wong, which sounds like a lot of fun. And also on April eighteenth, at five thirty PM, there will be an SEL Parent Night. Details for that can be found on Bartle's website. Middle school. The middle school's penny wars raised seven hundred and fifty-nine dollars for the Edison Animal Shelter. Many pets will benefit, so massive thanks to all that contributed. Next, their volleyball tournament was a huge success. The eighth grade team was the winning student team, but unfortunately got smoked by the staff team in the final round. R.I.P., y'all. Also, the movie night was a huge success. Thank you to all the parents and staff who made both of these events successful. Finally, the permission slip for the seventh grade trip was sent out earlier this week. It's been attached somewhere, probably to the website for your convenience, and the payments and that permission slip will be due by April seventeenth, twenty twenty-four. So if you're a seventh grade parent, get on that.
Over today at the high school, we were able to enjoy the eclipse outside today. We went out at around two thirty and enjoyed it until the bell rang at three, but even had some students to stay for the rest of it. We'd like to give a huge thanks to the PTSO for supplying the glasses. Next, the Highland Park Educational Foundation, who helps to sponsor many clubs and events at the school, are having a community meeting and are seeking new members. The meeting is on April tenth and right here in the middle school cafeteria at seven thirty PM. Next, the Highland Park Project Graduation is holding a night at the races event on April thirteenth at Pinos. Come and have fun and bet on a horse. There will be food, drinks, door prizes, and more. Tickets can be bought at HPProjectGraduation.com, and anyone interested in sponsoring can also go to that site. The proceeds from this event will support the class of twenty twenty-four in safely celebrating their prom and graduation. And the teen center is hosting One Dream, One Team, One Dream. This program will include games and discussions about your concerns about relationships and creating healthy friendships, as well as boundary setting. They had their first meeting today after school and will continue meeting on Mondays in the teen center after school from three to four PM.
The Highland Park Drama Club has officially begun work on their last production of the year, One Acts. The production is a string of ten-minute or less one-act shows that are fully written, produced, and created by the students. Today, they held one of the three writing workshops for the students to learn about playwriting and to help them begin their writing. They were joined by, well, they will be joined by an alumni of the drama club the next two days, and they're very excited to get started. The high school classes are also holding a school-wide fundraiser of the Wizards Basketball Show. The team will come to the high school gym on May thirteenth at six thirty PM and will sing and dance their way through a game against the Highland Park teachers. Oh, boy. Tickets can be bought at HarlemWizards.com, all one word. The high school, beginning next year, so sorry, seniors, will offer an opportunity to teach sports to students with special needs through their A-period buddy ball program. Students who are interested can sign up using the QR codes on the flyers hung around school or reach out to Ms. Landis at ELandis@HPschools.net. Finally, the high school's teen pep night will be on April sixteenth in the high school cafeteria. The night will provide parents and guardians and teenagers with a form that encourages open communication on issues of sexual health, gender, and sexuality. And that's all from the student report.
Thank you, Roy. Any questions for our student representatives?
Thank you.
Thank you so much, guys.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to move to our superintendent's report.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you, Andrew and Roy, for a great presentation and updates on goings-on. I just want to echo some of the sentiments that, I appreciate all the parents, guardians, and caregivers out there that are doing some really great things for our students by getting involved, and it sounds like the high school, middle school PTO is revving up, which is really awesome. So I really encourage all parents, guardians, and caregivers, please come out and support all these great organizations. I know the PTO needs support, our booster club, HP Booster Clubs need support, our HPEF needs some support, some, you know, vibrant, you know, families and parents that want to get involved, so please get involved, all of this great, you know, great work and volunteer to pay off for the students. Thank you. Thanks for reporting on that. So tonight, I'm really excited that we have Mr. Gold here and his Model UN. So those who are not here in public, there's a whole bunch of students here that were really excited to share about their trip to Mexico City, so I'd like to invite Mr. Gold up to the podium. And I'm not sure if you're bringing people with you, or, I'm not sure, but you're more than welcome to go to the podium as well and share about your experiences. Welcome, Mr. Gold. Thank you.
Thank you, yeah. So first of all, thank you for letting us present today.
Oh, sorry, I just want to, as close to the microphone as you can get so the people at home can hear. Thank you.
We wanted to start by extending gratitude for this opportunity. This is a unique experience that our district offers that really distinguishes our school from so many other public schools, not only in New Jersey, but across the country. And we think it's really special, and we really appreciate your trust in our students. We also wanted to thank the HPEF because I know that they need support right now. They actually supported this program the first time that it ran. We, this program is, I know it's Model UN. Our Model UN team competes, and we're very proud of those competitions. Other academic programs in the school, like the Robotics Club and DECA, also compete and do amazing things. This trip is a little bit different, which is why we wanted to share it and why HPEF supported us initially. It's a global ambassador trip. The idea is we're supposed to be representing not only our community, but our country in visiting Mexico City, and we are supposed to be learning from our experience there. And as you'll hear from our students today, we think that this visits to the schools that we do there and the partnerships that we gain with those teachers and with those students, the cultural experience is even more important than the actual competition that we participate when we're there. So we thanked the HPEF for offering an opportunity for us to do this the first time. They sent us to Montreal, gave us some funding many years ago. The last time we were there was right during the pandemic, right before the pandemic really broke out. So this was wonderful to be able to get back there. And we also wanted to thank one other organization, the Citizens for Global Solutions, that provided a grant to support students who needed financial aid to be able to attend. So we wanted to thank those organizations, as well as the district, for really supporting us. And I wanted to turn it over to Yaya and Enen and Anna, who will share a little bit about their experience, and we have a little slideshow they prepared.
Hi, everyone. My name is Yaya Hang, and I'm a senior, so this is my fourth year doing Model UN. Should we introduce ourselves as we go? Okay.
Hi, I'm Anna Driscic. I'm a junior, and this is my third year doing Model UN.
Hi, my name is Enen Chu. I'm also a senior, and this is also my fourth year doing Model UN.
So we wanted to start this presentation with a little video that Mr. Gold made.
So, Gold, you have some hidden talents for director.
I hope, oh. I hope you all enjoyed that. So now we're going to talk about some of the schools that we visited while we were there. Yeah, so there were two of them. The first one that we saw was Escuela Amayeli. So at this school, what our goal was, was to, first off, first off, give a little presentation about what Highland Park High School was. We connected with the students there. We had a nice tour of their school, and we learned that their school system was very different from ours, the way that they joined different grades together and the classes that they had. So after the tour that we had of their school, we split up into three different groups. So these three Highland Park groups went to the Amayeli classes. So now, these classes, they included history, cinema, Mexican cinema, and Spanish literature, which was really exciting. So if we could move to the next slide. Thank you. Yeah, so here's some pictures of us participating in certain classes. Myself, I was in the history class, and I found it really interesting. So what we did there was, we broke off into little groups of three. We talked about American history, Mexican history, and different political issues that we were all facing. So it was really interesting to learn more about Mexican politics, because that's not something that I normally follow, but it was important for us to get a different perspective on world problems. The other classes I wasn't in, but I heard great things about them. I know that in the Spanish literature class, students had an opportunity to read poems, write their own poems, sort of, edit them, so that sounded pretty cool. And Mexican cinema class, I just heard great things about what they learned there. So that was all a really good experience at Amayeli. And also, just a little fun side part, we got to play soccer with the students there. They were very, very good, I will say. Beat us in a lot of games, but it was still a really enjoyable experience overall. Yeah. So the second school that we visited was Colegio Williams. Now, this was another private school. The other one was private as well. So here, it was a little bit different, because we began communicating with them before we actually arrived in Mexico City. So two Highland Park students were assigned to work with one student from Colegio Williams, and we were kind of like pen pals for a little bit. We were exchanging emails, sharing facts about ourselves, and just about Model UN experience. And we, I know some Highland Park kids, we prepared presents to give to our friends from Colegio Williams. So when we got there, it was really nice to meet these students in person. We got a wonderful tour of their school, which was very beautiful, by the way. It's in the next slide. Yeah, it was like a castle. It was really, yeah, it was really incredible. And so what we did was, we broke off into discussion groups as well. And it wasn't exactly as like conversational about political issues this time, but it was more about personal stories, I felt like. So it was really interesting for me to learn how some of these students grew up and how diverse the school really was. So I just found that to be a very helpful experience.
So one of the most important things going to Mexico City was being able to learn about the culture. And every night that we had free time, when we weren't in committee, we got to visit a different neighborhood of Mexico City. So the three neighborhoods that we got to visit were Condesa, Cojoa Can, and Polanco. And Condesa, we got to visit on the first night, and we got to try out some Oaxacan food, which was super delicious. But it was just super nice. We got the opportunity to walk around. We passed a skate park. We got churros. And we just kind of got to like chill and see like all the beautiful like greenery, and there's like, there's so many trees in Mexico City. All the streets are beautiful to walk down. Then we also got to visit Cojoa Can, and we got to spend a good half a day there. We went to an outdoor market that was super big, and we got to shop at all these vendors. And a lot of these vendors are usually just selling to people in Mexico City who speak Spanish. So we had to speak a lot of Spanish while we were walking around in these vendors to communicate what we wanted to buy, to ask how much money it was, or just to have conversations to say that, you know, we had to pay, we wanted to pay with card, or we wanted to pay with pesos. And so it was a really good opportunity to use our Spanish skills. And they appreciated it when we weren't speaking English, because it was much easier to communicate. And it was good for us to get the opportunity to practice. And we also visited a neighborhood called Polanco, which is a little more upscale, so there was a lot of cool architecture. There were a lot of restaurants lining the streets. People were eating outside. It was a super nice day out, so we got to walk along the street. We had really good tacos for dinner. And it was just really nice to go through all these different neighborhoods and see how there were differences even in Mexico City of how people lived. You can go to the next slide. So a couple places we got to visit. We got to visit the Museum of Anthropology and Chipotlepec Park. So Chipotlepec Park is this super massive, beautiful park. It's like, it's huge. It's bigger than Central Park. There's a massive lake in the middle that we got to walk around, and there's so many trees and different plants and greenery. And we got the opportunity to walk around and see all of it. There were vendors kind of lining some of the sidewalks, and people got to get souvenirs. And then we went to the Museum of Anthropology, which is a really well-built, super cool architecture, as you can see. And the Museum of Anthropology has the history of all the indigenous groups of Mexico that you maybe don't learn about in our American history, our American world history course. So it was really interesting to go throughout the museums and learn about the history of the indigenous groups of Mexico City. And there were a lot of different relics, and the architecture there was really cool, the way they rebuilt sort of kind of this civilization. So we could really, it was really a visual learning experience, along with being able to read about the indigenous populations. Next slide, please. Another fun thing we got to do was we got to go to a Lucha Libre match. And this was, it was super fun, because it was like a big, like, a really big, like, cultural experience. It wasn't like a museum or a guided tour. It was like you were in the city. You were with the people who really like wanted to be there. The crowd was super hype. And if you don't know, Lucha Libre is a scripted wrestling match, so they have different rounds, they have different champions. They're all wearing different costumes. You know, we got to pick our favorites, and we were rooting them on, and we were like, I think this one's gonna win. I think this one's gonna win. And we just got to be like really hyped with the crowd, and everybody was just having like a super fun time, and it was, it was super cool to see. Next slide. And then my favorite part of the trip, we got to visit Teotihuacan, which are pyramids. And we learned a lot about Teotihuacan and how it was built. We had a guided tour, which was super helpful, because I think if we all just went to the pyramids without this tour guide, we would just look at them and be like, wow, these are super cool, and then leave. But we got a guided tour guide, and he took us around the pyramids, and he taught us. We saw the two major pyramids, which are the Pyramid of the Moon, which is on the left, and then the bigger one, which is the Pyramid of the Sun. And we learned that, you know, historians don't know who established Teotihuacan, who built it. They know that there were indigenous groups that came to Teotihuacan, and that Teotihuacan comes from the Aztecs, who named it. And it means the place that the gods were created. And the Pyramid of the Moon and Sun are after the gods of the moon and the goddess of the sun. I mean, the god of the sun and the goddess of the moon. And we just, we got to learn a lot about how it's been excavated and the different processes they do to discover what's inside the pyramids. And we got to go through a museum before our outdoor tour to learn a little bit, to give us some background information before we actually saw the pyramids. And we didn't get to go up them because of COVID. They don't let people go up them. But it didn't matter, because it was super cool to just be there. We got to walk down the Avenue of the Dead, which is where there's more of those little pyramids, and we got to see so much. And it was just like extremely like, we learned like so much about the pyramids and about how they were built and who lived in them and how they were destroyed. And it was just, it was super interesting. And it, like, I've gone home and I've done more research about these pyramids, because it was so, so interesting to learn all the legends. Next slide. And then finally, one of the most important things about culture is food. And in Mexico City, we all ate super good food. When we went to the outdoor market in Cojoa Can, we got to try new Mexican candies. We all got Mexican candies. Mr. Gold and Ms. Soler brought some home for the students here. And we also got, there's me and Enen, we got some Al Pastor tacos. Everybody got tacos on this trip, but those were like super good. We saw them make them in front of us, and it was just like, like everywhere we went, like the next picture, we tried Oaxacan food. It was something I wouldn't try normally, and like the things on the menu I hadn't even heard of, and I was like, okay, I'll just get this. And it was just, everything was so, so delicious, and every meal, I was like, I just was so happy that I had good food. And with food also comes language. You had to order in Spanish. We taught everybody who didn't know how to order in Spanish. And it was really an opportunity, not only in restaurants, but when we were at the schools or when we were in committee to speak Spanish, because all the kids in our committee spoke Spanish, not in committee, but outside, when we were walking around, you know, just around the hotel, everybody was speaking Spanish. And it was an opportunity to speak Spanish in a way that you don't in the classroom. You can't really have like conversations with students in the classroom. In the classroom, you know, you want to speak English if you don't know a word. But when you're with students that speak Spanish, you, you have to like know how to speak the language and be able to have a conversation. And it was just like a really good opportunity to test out your skills and expand your skills, because as we spoke Spanish to our new Mexican friends, they would speak English to us. So we both got to like help out each other with words and just like have the opportunity to practice our Spanish in like a real-world way. And it's something that I can never get in the classroom, and I really just appreciate.
Okay, so now to the actual conference. We debated in total for four days, which was a long time, but it was very rewarding, of course. One thing to note that's really interesting about this conference is that we are one of three American schools here. But the other schools that are attended, that attended from Mexico, they're all private schools. So what Mr. Gold was teaching us was that this is a very slim picture of students in Mexico, and that private schools typically get a lot more funding than public schools ever will, and that in general, their school systems are different. And so by seeing that, and by seeing that, you know, so many private schools are here, but so many other private schools don't even have a Model UN team, and the ones that we talked to don't have a lot of sports teams or a lot of clubs. It made us just grateful in general for us to be there in the first place. But the way the conference was divided was with two sort of time periods. The first one was in nineteen eighty-nine, and the second one was present day. And this allowed different committees to bridge together and connect, so that the people you're talking to in your room weren't the only people you would interact with over the course of the four days. And that's something I found really unique with the conference specifically, that helped me be able to talk to a lot of other people and make a lot of new connections. So the last slide was the nineteen eighty-nine committees. This slide is the present-day committees. And for example, for mine, I was the present-day United States Cabinet, and I was representing the Secretary of State, Antony Blinken. And I was going into this committee sort of feeling like, if this was a committee that we had experienced here, you know, just in New Brunswick at the Hyatt, I feel like I could predict a lot of what was going to happen in terms of debate. But the fact that people, like Mexican students, were representing American figures, and they had different ideologies and notions of the United States, provided a lot more in terms of the debate and what I experienced, because, you know, as they're researching their committees, they don't get the same websites that we do, and they're not seeing the same information and not knowing the current news maybe as well as I do experiencing it through school. And so by talking to them and debating with them for such a long time about the United States, broadened my view a lot about, you know, worldviews about the United States and how other people perceive us. And one thing that was also very fun about this conference was they do midnight crises. So on Saturday night, or I believe Friday night, they wait, they knock on your door at around eleven thirty PM. And so you have to go down to your committee room and debate from around twelve PM, anywhere from two to three in the morning. It might not sound fun to you guys. For us, it was enjoyable. I enjoyed it a lot. They throw like a very random, like, situation at you, and you have to try and figure it out. And a lot of the kids are trying not to fall asleep, but it's a very immersive experience nonetheless, and you get extra sleep the next day. So if you, if you go to the next slide. We did really well at this conference. We had a lot of fun. Overall, we won twenty-five individual awards. Some of us won multiple. Hugh, right there, he won four awards, because he's a very strong debater. He did very well in his committee. But as a whole, all of us did a really good job in terms of dictating the room. And that's something that Model UN has taught me specifically, is making sure that people know what my view is in that room. That's something Mr. Gold talks about a lot, is making sure that other people know what you're representing, and that it's just a life skill in general, not just in Model UN. But as, you know, as I go into college and as I get a job, it's important for me to be able to voice my concerns and voice my opinions. And that's the biggest thing that Model UN has taught me specifically. But in general, we also won the best delegation there, which is on the next slide, which is a testament to the hard work that everyone um, which is a testament to the hard work that everyone put in. I know we made a lot of speeches over the course of the trip. Max, who's sitting over there, made one about how everyone put in a lot of hard work in terms of researching their characters, who they were, their countries. And making sure also that the people that we were representing, that our opinions were accurate to what we were saying. And that we weren't misconstruing any country or any person or delegate there. And that we were making sure that we were going along with history, but we were also adding new ideas that we thought would be beneficial. So yeah.
Yeah. So on one final note, um, just to emphasize how important this trip was, we learned a lot, um, as Americans here, but we also wanted to do something helpful for the first school that we visited, Amayeli. So, um, they're a private school, which means they have more resources, but during the COVID pandemic, their, uh, Model UN club wasn't able to continue on. So what we wanted to do was we, some of us met with some of their students to talk about restructuring or recreating a Model UN club for them. That way they would be able to participate at MyMen in future years, like we were so lucky to do so. So they used to have a club, um, and we're trying to help them bring it back. So some of us tried to schedule a Zoom debate with them, um, on abortion. So that was in works. And for us, what we learned a lot from this conference was different ways to make this experience more educational. So Highland Park Model UN, we run our own conference in May or June. This year it's in June. And we learned a lot from MyMen, so we took some of the ideas there. And we're trying to recreate it in our own way to make it work for a one-day conference for Central Jersey, um, delegates to learn the same way that we did. So thank you, everyone.
Yeah, I was gonna say, do you have one more thing to say?
Just one, like, uh, uh, an important, uh, theme for us is, is gratitude, understanding where we are, our, our privilege and our positionality in the world. And I, I just want to make sure that I express my gratitude for my students. Um, and I think that all of you and their parents and the community. Um, I, I think you would be extremely grateful for the way that they represented, uh, this school, this district, this community, this country, um, at a time when our politics are so divided. For them to be young people representing to a lot of the students there, what Americans are like when those students have preconceptions themselves. Um, I think it's really foundational for the development of, um, an early diplomatic relationship. And I was just so proud of them, uh, beyond winning the awards. I'm just so proud of them. And I think you would all be too, if you were there to see them in person. So thank you to them and thank you to all of you so much. Thank you for presenting.
Thank you, Mr. Gold, and to our Model UN, um, students. It sounds like such an amazing trip. You made me very hungry. Uh, but honestly, just the, the culture and seeing the world and seeing the world through other people's eyes um, can be truly life-changing. So I'm really grateful that you all had that experience. And it sounds like you put in a lot of time and effort and hard work, even leading up to it, but it sounds like there's a lot of preparation that has to be done. So, uh, Mr. Gold, thank you for your commitment and students as well. Um, thank you for that. And I also want to thank the board for their support of the field trip. Um, I know that funding can be a challenge, um, especially for, uh, a population, um, you know, that's ever-changing in Highland Park, where a lot of our students do qualify for, you know, free and reduced lunch and, and subsidy and need, and need that financial support. Um, even the support I know we've talked about in the past, even I know there's, if you've noticed in the pictures, certain dress attire that has to happen, um, during debates and things like that. And sometimes, um, our students don't have access to the appropriate attire that they have to wear. So I know we have opportunities for students to get, um, some of that, that clothing and things like that. So there's a lot more that goes into, to this trip other than flying to another country and to act as parent apparendai when, uh, when, when they're not there. So it's way more than that and just way more than the prep work. There's a lot that goes into it. So I thank the board, the HPF and, and all the funding that happens. And I believe if I'm not mistaken, that the spring conference that you hold is also a little bit of a fundraiser too, um, to support that. So I encourage anybody in the, in Central New Jersey to come and participate, uh, and learn from our students. So thank you again. And, um, I just want to open up if anybody on the board had any questions or comments, um, for Mr. Gold or the team.
Well, I just wanted to echo the thank you to everyone, all the students and certainly Mr. Gold. I mean, I think you're very modest and humble, um, but I know, I believe I could speak on behalf of both of us here. We really appreciate the work that you've done with, um, the students over the years. So I know when my student was at, my son was at the high school and he tested out the waters with Model UN, I was shocked. But that was you sort of really coaching him, nurturing him. And I see you doing that and all the students that come to you or that you find a way to bring them to you. And I think we really value your presence and what you contribute to our community here. So I just wanted to say that. Um, and for the students, what an amazing experience. All I can say is I am overwhelmed with just how much, how well you presented, first of all, and how much you clearly gained from this experience. Because I know that we know you go on these trips every year. You go to Mexico City, but we've never really heard about the totality of the experience. I think about the competitions and how you guys are doing in these committees and how you must be stressed out the whole time and, you know, in those. But no, you are doing so many wonderful things. Uh, it's just, uh, a transformative life experience. I'm really excited to hear that you do so much more of the immersion, cultural immersion and exchange you're bringing back and giving back to others. So excellent job. Keep it up. And we'll miss you when you all go on, but you are taking so much from your experiences, not just at the high school, but traveling abroad as you go on to your next endeavors. So thank you.
I also just want to extend my sincere gratitude to you, Mr. Gold, and your dedication to these students and also, um, awesome presentation. I really appreciate it. But I just wanted to say, Mr. Gold added a personal touch to the trip where they did Secret Santa Fe. And all of the students were assigned like a Secret Santa type of thing where they got little souvenirs for each other, which I thought was really sweet. And just little extra touches like that, that you, that you add to the trip. Thank you.
Well, thank you. So that concludes my presentation, um, Mr. Gold and students. You're more than welcome to stay for the totality of this riveting board meeting. Um, but please, you know, feel free to excuse yourself. I know you have, you know, lots to do, uh, outside of, of the meeting. So thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Everyone.
All right, we're going to move to our board committee reports. Um, first, Andrew, I forgot to, I forgot your name, so I thanked Roy for his, her, for your report. And then I was like, so I was like, all right, I gotta circle back. And of course, Andrew, and I know your name, which is so crazy, but thank you both for your reports. Um, okay. So we'll start with curriculum. We have not met since our last meeting. Um, we are meeting Thursday, uh, but we do have some items that will be on the agenda for approval. Um, the first is the field trips that are attached. There's a pep rally at Bartle. So our middle school cheer team is going to be walking to Bartle to perform. Um, another walking trip, which is the high school and middle school grounds will be used by the Irving School uh, for a whole school picnic, um, for K and one. And we also have a Bartle Elementary School trip for the first grade. Uh, the first grade from Irving is going to go see their new school. So it's one of the, probably the most exciting trips of the year. Uh, we also have a resolution to approve the 2023, 2024 nursing plan, which is attached to the agenda. Uh, we have a res- resolution to approve the program of peer mediation at the middle school, um, which would be effective September 1st, 2024. Um, this is a voluntary conflict resolution process in which two trained student mediators facilitate communication between their disputing peers, empowering them to negotiate a mutually acceptable agreement. Um, an agreement may not always be reached at that time, but the process of mediation is still beneficial among peers. And that's because the program has been so successful at the high school that they are now going to bring peer mediation down to the middle school. Um, and we have a resolution to approve some job descriptions. We have, um, a supervisor of funded programs and district initiatives and human resources, um, a human resources, health benefits and payroll support position and a lead nurse position. Again, we are approving the position descriptions. That does not mean that these are going to be hired for, but we do want to have them on hand should budgets allow for, um, these roles. And that concludes curriculum instruction. Equity and excellence.
Nothing to report.
Finance and facilities.
Uh, we did not yet meet. I think we meet tomorrow night. Um, so, uh, there'll be more to tell when we meet again later in April. It's on, okay. And, um, also our agenda items for finance facilities are very short. I suspect later in the month, they're going to get a lot longer. But we do have on the agenda, the resolution to approve travel and related expense reimbursement reports. Um, and that's attached. Resolution to approve, um, it's another one of these pass-throughs that we need, that we, um, have on our agenda often. That's non-public school security. This is for Children's House Montessori. For a padlocking system, code locks and padlocks. That's, uh, they're right here in Highland Park, Children's House Montessori. Um, and then a resolution to approve the purchase of a mail center mailing system for our business office at the cost of $9,090. Um, and a resolution to approve the following contracts, which are, uh, for professional development. One is inspired instruction, um, for, uh, PD, a full-day PD at Bartle of the middle school. And it's going to be paid by Title II A funds. And Go Guardian, um, six half-day professional development sessions. These dates are to be determined, also paid for by Title II A funds. And that's all for this one, this round.
Any questions for this finance?
I like them short. Doesn't have an off day.
No, it won't be that way next week. Next meeting. All right, personnel and communication.
I just have one question.
What is the mail center? What is that?
That mean? Postage. Like the machine, yeah, that stamps the postage. Yeah.
Um, personnel and communication, we did meet right before the break on March 26th. In attendance were Dr. Suska, Marilyn, Nikki and, and myself. Went over the agenda items. We have a resolution to accept the resignation of Ms. Stern, Mandarin teacher at the middle school. A resolution to accept the resignation of Ms. Gentlecore, which is our HR payroll administrative assistant in the business office effective May 31st. Resolution to approve an extension of a leave of absence for, um, one employee on the following dates, uh, February 12th through the 29th and unpaid from March 1st to May 5th, um, with a return to work on May 6th. Resolution to approve a paid medical leave using sick days, starting on May 1st through June 30th. Resolution to approve a family leave of absence from April 22nd to June 3rd, um, eligible for FMLA. Resolution to approve the request to receive payment for 10 days minus the cost of a substitute due to extenuating circumstances while remaining on family leave. Um, the paid medical leave ends on March 25th. Resolution to approve the request from employee, from one of our employees to receive payment for 71.5 days minus the cost of a substitute due to extenuating circumstances. And I'm sorry. What is, like reading backwards. I should just be using the paper copy. Are you up to date? Resolution to approve summer band camp, um, from Mr. Presty. This will be a one-week summer band camp in the last week of August, um, half-day, nine to 12:00 PM. Um, I believe this is using Esther funds. Resolution to approve Michael Nastis, paraprofessional at Irving, um, as the volunteer middle school baseball coach. Uh, a resolution to approve the following staff to receive a stipend for being a special education instructional coach, um, April 1st through June 30th. This is funded by Title II A. Ms. Blevins, Ms. Gerlach, Ms. Takkas and Ms. Powell Williams. Um, that's at all four schools. Resolution to approve additional hours for the brothers mentoring program at Bartle, um, for Ms. Maiden, Mr. Friscia and Mr. Burrell. And brothers mentoring at the middle school, um, for Mr. McGlynn and again, Mr. Friscia. That's it. He's at both schools. Um, resolution to approve the following staff for presenting professional development and prep for the PD Academy. Uh, Ms. Drescher, Ms. Dobell and Ms. Drescher again for different topics. Um, yeah, and that's it. That is it for me. Sorry. Any questions on the agenda items?
Policy.
Um, policy also is meeting this coming week. So, um, however, there are on the agenda quite a few policies for first reading and some for second reading. Um, all the agenda, all the policies are both of the board folder also actually attached here. So, um, I would encourage everybody to read them. And if you have comments, um, to send them along, because obviously we're not voting till later in the month. Uh, for the most part, these are all, um, changes are minor. Most of them are related to pronouns, related to, uh, the protected classes and the, the code rather than listing the classes. It's the affirmative action program, although I think we titled it differently. Comprehensive equity plan, equal opportunity, equal employment opportunities, affirmative action for employment and also for school classroom practices. Um, the policy on, uh, concussions and head injuries, sports-related and on vandalism. Those are all for first read. And then second read is we talked, we had them on our agenda last month. Code of Ethics, Equal Opportunity, these, most of these are resolutions, are regulations. Um, equal employment opportunity, curriculum content, also related to equity. Equity in school and classroom, bilingual and ESL, honoring student achievement and vandalism. I actually, when I looked yesterday at the honoring student achievement, we needed to do some fill-ins, which we'll look at when we meet later in the week. We either need to fill some things or make it a little more general, but, um, so that's what we'll be looking at later in the month. Uh, any questions or comments? So encourage you to read them when you, when you need to, when you have trouble sleeping at night. That is important for us all to look at them to make sure there's no questions. That's it.
All right, we're going to move on to public comment. The Highland Park Board of Education invites public participation during its meeting. Board policy number 0164.06 allows for public comments during remote meetings and comments can be submitted in advance via email or written letter. Um, board policy number 0167 underscores the importance of public comment and educational issues. During board meetings, a portion is allocated for public comment with participates, participants requiring to announce their name, place of residence and affiliation. Um, I'm sorry. Yes, and affiliation. Um, how many people do we have on our meet? Okay. There's nobody in person. So is there anybody online for public comment? Again, if anybody online wants to make a public comment, just raise your hand. Okay. Um, we are going to move. Uh-oh. Yes, uh, president's report. So I just want to echo what, um, Dr. Suska was saying. We have a few groups in town that are, um, kind of turning over in terms of parent leadership. Um, we do have our HP boosters. We have our Highland Park Educational Foundation. Um, and then we also have, uh, PTOs that need parent support and each principal has a parents advisory group. Um, all of these are opportunities for parents to get involved, um, not only just in the, the fun stuff, you know, the sports and, and trips, but also with the, um, parent advisory groups to be able to have conversations with leadership about, um, things that are going on in the building. So if you did not know that those groups were around, please do reach out to your building principals. Um, they are, you know, basically you get an invitation, um, and then you are provided the link to attend. Um, and that's all I have for my president's report. Any old business?
Quick question, just on the parent advisory committee outreach. Are the administrators just sending out? How are they reaching out to all the families so that everyone's?
So typically, um, the, the invitation was originally sent out in the beginning of the year. I mean, I only see Bartle and middle school. Um, I don't get the emails from Irving or the high school. Um, but I also know that Ms. Brady will put it in her emails, um, when there is the next coming, uh, the next advisory group coming up. And I believe Ms. Knapp does as well. Um, though she sends out more quarterly, uh, communications, so it would be there. But we can definitely have, uh, Jen as chair kind of touch on that during the communications.
Thank you.
Another thing I wanted to just update folks on is that there's a central leadership team meeting this week that will discuss start times. that will discuss start times, since I know that's something the public is very interested in. So that will be a major topic of that meeting coming up.
They're, what they're going to be doing is they're also discussing the results of the questionnaires that went out to each of the school, school groups. And maybe I think also just to overall the impact on the change in our scheduling. So that will be, I think absenteeism is on the agenda also. As on that agenda, so right, we'll kind of report that at the end of the month.
And we are aware that some parents did not get a pop-up notification when the Bartle parents logged in, so the staff at Bartle is making phone calls to each person that did not submit a survey in order to make sure that everybody has a chance to submit one.
Well, and just to interrupt, so I did, when I pulled the report of who didn't complete it, there were some parents that didn't complete it from other schools as well, so it went to all four schools, the entire list. There were about 300 and something students in general that it wasn't completed for. One, we want to make sure it gets done because reading report cards is very important to to know that, you know, you can have access and see where your children are. You know, in their trajectory in school, but also to make sure that the all, everybody on the list was contacted because we want as, as close to 100% participation would be great because it's a really important piece of feedback for us. So that just, it didn't just go to Bartle. We, I did suggest that everybody get, so if you're on the list, expect a personal phone call from your building.
Thank you for clarifying. Any new business?
Yeah, so just a quick comment. It's kind of so interesting speaking when nobody's here. Hope you all. So I just want to say in general, I'm, you know, I'm just really optimistic about the collaboration between the Board of Education and the Borough. Can you, can you hear me? Okay. We're really striving to kind of establish a new way of working together. And what I will say at a very, very high level, right now, we're engaged in a series of strategic planning sessions to make sure that Highland Park actually maximizes the dollars coming to us that we, quite frankly, have not had for me to in the past years related to other towns, and it's really our time now. And so we're working together to make sure that, that, you know, we get what we need from an infrastructure perspective. So it's pretty exciting. I think everyone here has an incredibly important part to play here on the Board of Education as well as the Borough side and the council and the mayor. And so just giving you a little teaser, more to come, stay tuned. And, you know, I think it's just so really exciting on how, how we're, we're changing the way that we work together to make it happen. And Anne has something smart to say. Because she always does.
Being able to work with the Highland Park Public Schools administrative staff. Denise is an absolute rock star, but Dr. Suska, John, our facilities, I, like manager, I just cannot say more good things about what I think we're going to be able to work forward and achieve together. And it's a good team. So I want to say thank you. Denise worked with me on our spring break even.
Can I add something real quick? So I know that Mr. Flanagan actually talks to the students in the high school. And he strikes some conversations. I hear his voice echoing down the halls. And he asks, he asks us like what's going on with the facilities and how he can make it better. And people like the students know who he is, so definitely a good thing to add.
All right, we will move to our second public comment. Again, we invite public comment and participation during these meetings. Is there anybody online for public comment? You can raise your hand. How many do we still have? 13?
I'm still engaged, that's good.
Okay. All right, but we are doing something a little bit different tonight. We are going to be recessing to executive session to discuss negotiations. When we return, we are coming back just to adjourn the meeting. So if you are online, there will be no new information, no discussion, executive session, no new decision-making. So I'm going to move, be it resolved pursuant to the Sunshine Act, NJSA 10:4-12 and 13. The Highland Park Board of Education will now meet in closed session to discuss matters related to negotiations. These exemptions are permitted to be discussed in closed session in accordance with NJSA 10:4-13. Information regarding the board's closed session, discussion will be disclosed to the public as soon as the need for confidentiality no longer exists. I move that we recess to executive session. May I have a second? Second. All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
I move that we reconvene to regular sec- session?
Second.
Roll call please.
Dr. Beatty.
Here.
Ms. Casal Dunn.
Here.
Dr. Coleman.
Here.
Dr. Pixley.
Here.
Ms. Perus.
Here.
Dr. Schoolman.
Here.
Ms. Daniel. Ms. Vardeman.
Here.
Ms. Voorhees.
Here.
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?